Let's Play! Woah!
Hello there ladies and gentlemen, you all may call me Pharaoh, and welcome back to Let's Play: Professor Layton and the Unwound Future. Last time I left off, we were on our way to Chinatown, and just before we got to the gates of it, Big Luke comes back, he's like, "You know what? We, uh, looks like there's some issues. We gotta go back to the clock shop, because we wanted to see if we can possibly talk with Inspector Chemley and Barton to see if they know anything that hell's going on." So we just made our way back to the clock shop now, and uh, see what's gonna be happening here.
There's a shop! The door was locked earlier, but no one would answer it when we knocked!
It's because he didn't know the secret knock. Watch this.
Come on in!
Go on, try the door now.
It doesn't look like anyone's here.
Oh, there's the creepy lady again.
T, well, look who's back! Oh, what are you doing hiding there? I see you've learned the secret knock, dearie.
Actually, it was I who did the knocking, Spring. There's Cog around.
There you are, Luke. Cog's in the back room. Oh, are you friends with the owners of the clock shop, Luke?
I suppose I neglected to mention that earlier, but yes, Spring and Cog have been helping me. Cog actually explains the situation better than I do, so you should ask him about it.
Alright, uh, let's hear what he has to say.
Now, with that actually being said, there are three other hink coins here, even though we've technically been here before. Uh, we got one on the bottom-left flyer. I think before it was this flyer, but now it's this one. Uh, we have one, the middle clock on the top. There we are, and then one of the steps here in the back. There we go. Let's see if they had to say anything.
Cog's tuning up the clock in the back.
Cog's in the back room. He'll fill you in on how all this time-traveling began. Sorry for keeping you in the dark. It was never my intent to make you feel tricked. Okay, well, let's see Cog, I guess. Well, actually, before talking to him, three other hink coins. There's gonna be one all the way to the left. I think that's like a lamp, a desk lamp. There we are. Uh, there's one on the bottom. Why would a clock this huge in such a small room? No, hold on, it's somewhere around here. There we are, so right there. And one at the very top valve, or you know, dial of this big clock. Up here. There we go.
I thought I heard voices up front. Nice to see you again, Professor, and uh...
Luke, the Professor's apprentice.
Yes, yes, Luke, of course.
Cog, would you mind, uh, talking a bit about the wormhole and how it all started? I think it would help get everyone on the same page.
It'd be my pleasure. You there, Luke. The smaller Luke, that is.
Yes?
Tell me, boy, what does this contraption behind me look like to you?
A big ol' clock!
Right you are! By my estimates, this clock is well over a hundred years old. The old gal needs a lot of TLC to keep chugging along, so I spent quite a bit of time on maintenance.
And also all those channels and, uh, excuse... Channels. I was trying to make a stupid TLC channel joke, and I just completely bombed it. What's new there?
I was right in the middle of oiling up her gears one day when two family goons busted in.
Lock, oh my god. Here we go. This has got to be the place the boss was talking about.
Well, for sure. Hey, boss, there's a big clock here, just like you said. It's really antique. Come here and see.
Just what do you two think you're doing barging into my shop? Get your hands off my clock!
Cut it, Gramps. You don't get to tell us what to do. Don't you know who you're dealing with?
Yeah, a bunch of blockheads who won't leave my shop.
If I were you, I'd keep a civil tongue in my head, old man. Now, out of the way, we've got a schedule to keep. What are you clowns butzing around for? Get to work! We know Harry thinks we'll be ready for the bite of you-know-who talked about. Sorry, pastor. We're trying our best, but Gramps is making things difficult.
Don't be a long kid. You know how to deal with difficult. Throw 'em out in the streets.
Let me go, you debt bag!
We're just going for a little walk, Gramps. That's okay with you, isn't it?
You keep your filthy hands off my clock! You hear me?
We're just about on schedule. But we have to wait to turn this thing on until it's the exact time the big guy mentioned.
That's all I heard before those brutes tossed me out of my own shop. It wasn't until later that I found out that what the thugs wanted for my little clock shop. See, the family funded the construction of a time machine by some scientists. I think the idea was to use it to create some kind of wormhole, or warp point.
But how did they manage to do that?
Eh, beats me! It was all mumbo jumbo, unga bounga.
Wait, how'd he say it? Wait, mumbo jumbo, that was his name in Banjo-Kazooie, right? Like, something, okum tokum, something like that. Aw, man, Banjo-Kazooie. I kinda missed the days of like, you know, old Collect-a-thon games like that. Granted, there are a lot of like, uh, modern indie titles like that. I know Ukulele was kinda met somewhat mixed ahead in time. I heard it was great. And they just remade Ukulele, Uk- Replay-lee. Eh, okay, nevermind.
Uh, something went opening up a vortex in the flow of time. Anyway, for whatever reason, the plan didn't go exactly as I anticipated.
I see. And somehow this hole in time manifested itself in or near this clock of yours.
That'd be the case, yes. Uh, the clock has been here ticking away for over 100 years. My guess is that something about the clock's age caused the warp point to gravitate to this spot. Yep, the wormhole, or whatever the hell it's called, was pulled here and became a part of my clock. The thing is, I'm the only one who can keep that old gal running. Which means, like it or not, Spring and I are the only people who can open and close the wormhole.
That's really strange!
It's a burden, is what it is. Once the family found out about what I could do, they forced me to work the clock for them.
After a while, I caught wind of Cog's situation. I'm sure it goes without saying, but Cog isn't a part of the family. In fact, the family's been nothing but a source of trouble for poor Cog.
It just sounds that way.
Knowing that, I approached Cog and Spring and explained my idea to them. After getting them on board with my idea, Cog fired up the machine and helped me get my message to you. And upon receiving your letter, my curiosity took myself and Luke on a journey that led us here. That's quite the plan you drummed up, Big Luke. Thank you. But it's about to get even more interesting.
Oh?
Professor, with Cog's help, we can send you a little Luke back into your own time. You'll be able to ask Inspector Chemley all the questions he wants. But when you're done chatting, you'll come back to put a stop to what's going on here, won't you? Luke, of all, you of all people should know the answer to that question. Hell no! I keep my promises, and I intend to solve the problem here. It's what a gentleman would do.
Thank you, Professor. That was exactly the answer I was hoping for.
Well, I wouldn't dream of leaving things here in this state. You said it yourself, Big Luke. The only one who can stop Herschel Layton is Herschel Layton himself.
Quite right. My apologies, I should've never doubted you.
Okay, I guess let's do this.
Let me see here. Seems you solved at least thirty puzzles.
Okay, so there's a... You know, just like all the other games, there's kinda like a checkpoint, kind of like a... In a sense, like, it's like, hey, did you solve so-and-so puzzles? Or this amount of puzzles? Okay, now you can go.
Yep, you've done enough research to take your investigation back to your own time. Hopefully you learned something there that will help us fix a terrible situation in our time.
Yes, I hope so too. Now, Cog, if you would be so kind as to fire up the clock. I hope you understand if I stay here. I don't want to risk distorting the events of the past any more than necessary. I agree completely. Besides, the poor inspector's eyes might very well pop out of his head if I showed up with two Lukes.
But just think about how fun it would be to see his reaction. Pity you couldn't, you can't come, Big Luke.
Can't come, or simply won't come?
Okay, she's all ready to go. Let's get the show on the road.
And I apologize if the audio's gonna be really weird here. Yeah, it really doesn't like this particular segment. Uh, I don't know why, but... Sorry about that. Sorry if it kinda froze up there, I was moving things around.
Here we are.
Oh, I feel sick.
Are you going to be alright, Luke? You're positively green.
I feel sort of seasick. My ears are all stuffing, and the ground feels like it's made of marshmallow.
Yeah, that'd be the time sickness talking. The first jump I made, I felt the same way.
Well, Cog, we're going ahead of now and see what we can find.
Sounds good. I'll be here waiting for you. Just use that special knock, and I'll let you in.
Excellent. I was wondering how we contacted you if we went back out to your own time while we were out.
Yep, that'd be a pain, alright. Now, you two should skedaddle. I'd like to get home to time for dinner.
Alright, so yeah, I guess we are technically back in our own time, but... Man, I wish, I, I, there's gotta be more logic here. Our Max, our parrot, came with us. I see him flying up there next to us on the map screen, so... Yay.
There's no doubt about it, Professor. We're back in our time.
The surroundings here certainly do seem familiar.
Phew. You know, all of this time-travel's really worn me out.
Yes, I could do with a rest myself, but we mustn't keep Cog waiting.
You're right. So, shall we go and find Inspector Chemley?
That'll be our second stop. First, I'd like to run by my office at the university.
So, we are taking a break?
Not quite. We need to do a little prep work for our session with Inspector Chemley. Preparation, my boy, is the foundation upon which every good investigation is built.
Right you are, Professor.
Now that we're back in our own time, we can reach the university by bus in a matter of minutes. Let's go, Luke.
Star Shin! He has a puzzle for us!
K, 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 and how are you doing, young fella?
Oh, hello there. Nice to see you again.
Again? What's this "again" business? K, 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 k. I just thought I'd give you some advice, is all.
Alright, shoot!
As many folks know this, but when you solve puzzles, you can earn these.
Oh, if you're gonna talk about Piggly Wats, we already know all about them.
Oh, k, 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 is that so? Well, big deal, it's not all that great a secret anyhow.
Okay, well, thank you. We should really go now, we've got a lot to do.
Wait, don't turn off like that! I have, um, I have a puzzle! Yes, that's right, I have a puzzle for you!
Kinda feel bad for him. Uh, find the clock tower. Uh, let's see. Uh, to find a clock tower in the village below, just follow these directions. Go straight, then take the first left, then take the next right, uh, the next left, and it'll be right in front of you. Uh, which spot, A through H, is the clock tower located? I don't know. Well... When they say "go straight," like, let's just say I start with A. Like, if I go straight, do they mean like, to B or to D? Because if I go to B, that's not gonna work. Because I take the first left, there is no left. But if I go to... If I take D, take the first left, E, and take the right, G, and then take a left... There's that. Um... B... Well, that's not gonna work. Wait. Straight, left, there is no right. Straight, there is no left. Okay, so it's not B. Uh, straight, left... Take, take, take the first left, and take the right, and take the next... No, that's not gonna work either. Okay, so far, uh... Straight, left, right, left. So far, the only person's winning right here is A leading to H. Left, nope. Yeah, duh, 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 up, left, up... Nope, it has to be H. Just trying all the other ones, it didn't, didn't work, so... Yeah, that wasn't hard at all.
Hmm, how about this? Phew, that's a relief.
The clock tower's located at spot H. The directions are from spot A if you're facing spot D.
How was that for a fun puzzle, eh? It's in your top ten, yeah?
It was okay, I guess.
Wha- what? Just okay? Yeah, oh, I get it, you're playing it cool. You just don't want it to lit on that my puzzle locked your socks off.
You might be thinking too hard about this.
God, I kinda feel bad for him, but... I don't know.
Yeah, hello there, back to chat with your old pal, Sasha Falcon, yes?
Actually, we're in a bit of a hurry, maybe, uh, here, so maybe another time.
Oh... Buddy, maybe you should just go back to save the steer, I guess. Unless you're not even from there, I don't even know anymore. Nothing to do here. Hey, it's you!
Hi there, small fry, what can I do for you?
I noticed that there's a bus stop up ahead. London still has bus service, doesn't it?
Of course! We've got more buses than you can shake a stick at! What an odd question to ask.
Excellent! Did you hear that, Professor? London's buses still run!
I heard, Luke. Your extroversion is appreciated, but we don't want to unsettle our friend here. Jeez, I've never seen someone so jazzed about riding the bus. Well, if you like buses, you're gonna love this little number.
Oh, god. How many people? I was riding a double-decker bus, and the tour guide in the upper level told me that including myself, there were twenty-five tourists in the lower level, and forty percent as many tourists in the upper level. How many people total were in the bus? And I just realized that... I'm sure this guy was around all the other puzzles, but... He's one of the puzzle guys! Alright. Uh... Well, it says here, "I was on the double-decker, and the tour guide on the upper level told me that including myself..." There were twenty-five tourists in the upper level. Well, actually, in the lower level. "Including myself." Is he still talking about the tour guide at this point, or... Maybe not. But either way, so twenty-five, now, once again, I'm probably thinking way too simplistically about this, but... Um... Would it be simply twenty-five plus the forty percent of that twenty-five? So if I took twenty-five and times it by point forty, that gives us ten, right? Um... So, and then, obviously, altogether, that's thirty... Thirty-five. But, I feel there's a trick question again. Like, the whole point of, uh... Um... I'm thinking back to the other bus question we had, about how many hours does it take to go back and forth? We have to have a driver. And what, so that's thirty-six. But now I'm getting confused if the, if the actual tour guide's included in that twenty-five. I don't think it is. I guess I'm getting a little bit confused, because we're talking... We're talking as if we're one of the tourists. "I was riding a double-decker bus, and the tour guide on the upper level told me that including myself..." Like, he's telling me that including me, there's twenty-five tourists. And forty percent as many tourists in the upper level. So I think we got the base number down, thirty-five. But the trick is to also remember that we have, we also have the tour guide themselves, and the driver actually driving it. So that puts us at thirty-seven.
This one's as good as solved!
There we go.
I knew it!
Damn trick. Thirty-seven people were riding the bus. There were twenty-five tourists in the lower level, and forty percent of that is ten tourists in the upper level. This amounts to thirty-five tourists. If you then add the tour guide and the bus driver, you get a total of thirty-seven.
You know, I'm a bus aficionado myself. My favorites are the double-deckers around town.
And as I mentioned at the very beginning of this Let's Play, that seems like it would be cool to do. Now, it's not to say that double-deckers are exclusive to, you know, London, you know, England whatsoever. They're pretty much anywhere. I mean, even in my city, we have them. You know, once again, more touristy, but... I don't know, something about the London-England one seemed kinda cool. Hey, it's a hink coin lady, and she has a thing for us.
Hello again, bright eyes. Well, I trust you found yourself some nice shiny hink coins?
Yes, and your expert direction played no small role.
Lovely, I'm glad I could be of help. But where's my thank you? Out with it already?
Of course, please excuse my, excuse me for not issuing proper thanks. We appreciate your assistance.
Yes, thank you! We never would've found them without the help of a wise old lady like yourself! Now, just a moment there, half-pint. Who are you calling old? They don't call me flawless Florence for nothing, you know! I'm as fit as nipples at a teenager! I apologize, Miss Florence, I didn't mean to call you old. I know how sensitive some seniors can get about their age, Luke! Senior, old! You just don't get it, now do you? Looks I'm gonna have to teach you a lesson the old-fashioned way, with a puzzle!
A heartfelt heart.
In my younger days, I was considered, uh, quite the catch. This is a picture of me back then, along with three of my handsome suitors. A few moments after this photo was taken, one of these gents confessed his love by presenting me with a heart. Can you guess which one?
Can I guess which one? Well... I don't know. A has a... He has a music book. B has roses, or bouquet for you, and C has a violin. I mean, I see a lot of roses like, around your gown. So, that kinda tells me like, you might like the roses more? Now, the music, you might like it, but... Um... I don't know. I mean, there's two, how do we know you even like music? A few moments af- a few moments after this photo was taken, one of these gents confessed his love. So I wonder if that's something, like, right afterwards? Um... What? I'm still confused here, like, what? He, he's holding a book of some type of music. I don't know if it's a music sheet, but it's like, music. And then bouquets and a violin. Trying to serenade her. Um... "He confessed his love by presenting me with a heart." What, are any of these in like, an actual heart? Like, that's, that's another thing, like, what can turn into a heart? Like, if she's being literal here. I mean, honestly, the bouquet looks like it kinda has a, has like, an, kinda of an upside-down heart shape? Maybe I'm looking at it hard. Hmm, I don't feel good about this one. I may need to look this one up. I don't want to, but I'm really confused here. Okay, no, I'm, I had to take a mulligan on this one, and frankly, this one is really dumb. I, I don't, I find this puzzle really idiotic. Uh, the answer is A. And you'll see why.
This one's as good as solved! Phew, that's a relief.
It was him, alright. He made a heart out of the magazine he was holding. Quite a creative gesture, eh? There's no inspiration like true love. I, I, I get it, but... I just, I still find this puzzle really dumb. Personally, others may like it, but I personally think this is a dumb one.
Hmm, you two are smart cookies when it comes to puzzle solving, I'd give you that.
The compliment beans hold the moor coming from a lady such as yourself, Florence. I do hope we run into each other again sometime.
T, now you're making me blush. You can sweet-talk me if you like, but you should know I'm a married woman. It looks, it seems our friend here was taking a shine to you, Professor.
Is that clown sticker? Oh... Well, I guess we can go ahead and, uh... Yeah, see, we can't really go anywhere else, because we gotta take the bus. Let's make our way back to my office. Now, which bus goes, uh, Greshen, uh, Gresenheller University? I think it might be two! Let's go to Gresenheller. I like the idea we get to travel a little bit more throughout this game.
I have to admit that I've gotten a bit turned around while all this time-traveling. What are we investigating now?
Oh, feeling a bit discombobulated, my boy? I can hardly blame you.
It's also not every day that I travel to the future and meet my adult self. I could do a bit of a review on our cases currently stands.
Very well. Let's see if we can bring up, bring you up to speed. Alright, do you remember why Big Luke called us to the future?
Well, to stop the evil Professor Layton, right?
And what exactly are we stopping my future stuff from doing?
Um, oh, right, we wanna stop you, uh, him, from completing his time machine research.
Precisely. Which is exactly why you and I are headed to Chinatown.
Oh, yes, now it's all coming back to me. But then we failed to get into Chinatown. It was at that point you started talking about asking the inspector some questions.
Yes, but at that time, I had no idea we'd be able to jump back to our own time to question him.
But in that sense, it seems we got pretty lucky, huh?
Hmm, perhaps.
Perhaps? It sounds like something isn't sitting right with you. Is something bothering you?
Indeed. It's that something we've come to investigate. Yeah, we just about reached our stop. Run by my office, and it's off to see the inspector. We arrived there, Gresenheller U. And, ooh, wait, did we, uh, finish a chapter? We may have. Yeah? Chapter five, The Forgotten Case. I need to stop by my office and check something. After that, we'll go find Inspector Chemley. Nice, this is a nice university. Alright. Um, well, we got some hink coins here. Uh, they're pretty much all gonna be toward the top. One is gonna be the, the middle chimney, up here. Uh, one's gonna be like, at the windows to the right of it. And then one's, uh, gonna be on, or by the watchtower steeple, over there. There we are. Who are you? Did we see this person before? Oh, god, maybe not, I would've recognized those eyes, huh?
There you are, Professor. I see you cancel lecture again this week. Let me guess, are you investigating another strange mystery?
Hello, Rosetta. Yes, something rather pressing has come up. But I'll be sure to hold a makeup session later.
Oh, no worries, Mr. L. As long as I get my credits, I'm not sweating it.
Now, what kind of attitude is that to have, Rosetta? If you want those credits, you'll have to earn them. As your paper is, and as your paper is on the Stone Relics of Cornwall, let's say you have your work cut out for you. As your advisor, I insisted you check in with me weekly until your paper's shaped up.
No, I didn't mean to imply I wasn't interested in the work, and I'm very much looking forward to our sessions together. Not every girl has the privilege of receiving private instruction Not every girl has the privilege of receiving private instruction from the great Professor Layton.
Um, ahem, what I mean to say is that you should check in during office hours. What the hell? What type of man do you think he is, woman?
Oh, you don't have to tell me twice, Professor. I'll see you next week. Hee-hee.
No, no! He only has eyes for Claire, which I don't even know what happened to her.
I don't know what this guy goes up to, but it can't be good, Professor.
Nonsense, my boy. I'm sure it's all in your head.
You can't fool me. Did you see the look she gave you? She's a man-eater! Whatever that means.
Oh dear. Oh my god. Okay, well, let's, let's just put that behind us. Uh, who's this guy? Hope he has a puzzle for us.
Hey, aren't you the guard? Oh, it's the guard. Aren't you the guard we bumped into at the demonstration? Why are you here?
Now, as you may recall, last week's demonstration experienced a few hiccups. When the dust settled, management decided it would best to cut me loose.
I'm sorry to hear that. Uh, excuse me, I don't believe I properly introduced myself. I'm...
Please, sir, don't bother. Dean Delmona filled me in. It's an honor to meet you, Professor Layton. I've actually been holding on to a puzzle just in case you happen to come by. You care to hear it?
Kinda dumb that they let go the security guard. It's not his fault the damn thing blew up. The Shady Trio. Each member of a shady trio was dressed in red, white, and green. However, none of their outfits were the same. Here's what witnesses had to say about them. They wore the same colored jackets. Two of them had white pants on. The larger man wore a white hat. The woman's jacket was green. Uh... Tap the trio's clothes. Um... Hold on, wait. Yeah, tap the trio's clothes and change the colors in match eyewitness reports. So, the men wore the same color, the men wore same-colored jackets. Two of them had white pants on, larger man had a white hat, so that stays that. The woman's jacket was green. So, we have that so far. Hmm... None of their outfits were the same, so there's that. I'm going to make the assumption that none of the colors are gonna be the same either. Like, they're not gonna have like a white hat and a white coat on. So, I think because of that, we don't have a white hat, she has the green jacket. So, I'm gonna make the assumption that they probably had red, um... They probably had red jackets on. The men. Now, two of them had white pants. Well, it can't be... You, because you already have white hat. So, yeah, must have green pants. So, that means you two have the white. And, well, I guess now your hat has to be different colors, huh? I... I guess that's it. They were dressed in red, white, and green, however, none of their outfits were the same. The men wore two, the same colored jackets. Two of them had two, had white pants on, the larger one wore a white hat, the woman's jacket was green. So, yeah, I, the only thing I'm iffy on is like, when they say that none of their outfits were the same, do they mean like each article of clothing is considered an outfit, or do they mean like just the alphabet between the three of them? Because, right now, I'm kinda making the assumption that they meant the articles of clothing, because I don't know how else we can solve this logically. If we assume that yes, they mean each article of clothing, then this should work.
I've got a good feeling about this one.
Okay, that was fun. I like those ones. For freight, or tra- shady trio, their clothes might be a bit too conspicuous.
Simply beautiful works, sir. Thank you so much for indulging me.
Not at all, I quite enjoyed my, myself.
Alright, time to go inside. Who's this nerd? Wait a minute, oh, this is like another angle. So, like, our door's right there in the middle. And then I, I made a joke and died about a box very beginning. Like, who the hell's next to us? Professor Coffee, Professor T, or something? Uh, okay, we do have three other hink coins. We got one on the very right, the plaque whatever there. Uh, we have one on the top left, the further away light. And then we have one on the bottom left, I don't know if that was, is that a bucket or something, but over here. Now, we can speak to whoever this is.
Herschel, my boy, I've been looking for you.
Hello, sir. Didn't you receive my notice that I was on holiday?
Oh, that? Well, yes, as everything's in order there. There's something else I need your help with.
In that case, please tell me how I can be of assistance to you, sir.
Lean in a bit, my boy, what I'm about to ask you.
Well, I wouldn't like anyone else to hear it. The thing is, I have a puzzle I simply can't work, work through on my own. My darling granddaughter brought it to me, and I can't, for the life of me, solve the blasted thing. I can see how that can be quite vexing.
Vexing is putting it politely. It's hard to feel like the king of your castle, you can't even solve your granddaughter's puzzle. It's a rather serious issue for me, Herschel.
Certainly sounds that way, sir.
Yes, so I take it I can count on you to help me work through this thing?
But of course...
Now, everybody that asks for our help, it's more so like, can you solve it for me, is basically what they're asking. Um, one over a thousand. Here are the match, some matchsticks that spell out 100m. Move one of the matches into this garbage to display a length that is 1 one-thousandth of that size. So, I remember I mentioned this before on MacMan. It's been a while since we've, um... Had like a matchstick-moving puzzle. So, match, remove one match, put it in the garbage, display a length that is 1 one-thousandth of that size. Well, we have meter, right? And frankly, the only thing that comes to mind that's very easy to do is you change that to 100 meter to 100, to 10... Centimeters. Uh, I'll be honest, I'm sure it's a very easy calculation, but like, to determine like centimeter to meter, et cetera, et cetera. Um... But, just logically, anyway, what else are you gonna move to change that length, you know?
I've got a good feeling about this one. Well, that's settled.
Terrific. 100m or 100 meters becomes 10 centimeters, which is 10cm, which is 10 centimeters. Boom.
Oh, that's it! My granddaughter's going to flip when she hears how clever her granddad is.
I'm glad I can help you with your predicament, sir.
Likewise. By the way, Herschel, I do have one small favor to ask of you.
Certainly.
Let's keep the fact that you helped me with this puzzle between you, me, and, uh, the wall, shall we?
Of course. After all, your reputation to, you have a reputation to maintain with your granddaughter. It will be our secret.
Oh, perceptive as always. And what about you there, young man? Can you keep a secret?
Of course. My lips are sealed, sir.
Splendid. For that, you have my thanks. One last thing, Herschel. There's a young lady in your office. She says she's waiting for you.
I see.
Oh, you must be talking about Flora.
I was about to say, what the hell happened to Flora all this time? But even then, wait, didn't, wouldn't she know that, well, I guess it would make sense if it's Flora, because like, everyone else would know that, hey, we're not currently in today.
Oh, I'm high there, Flora. You two have got some nerve leaving me alone while you go off on another adventure.
Now, Flora, you know that wasn't our intention at all. While we were out investigating one issue, an even more troublesome matter arose.
What kind of troublesome matter?
We couldn't have seen it coming, Flora. Honest.
Really?
Of course, we wouldn't have left you behind on purpose.
Luke is quite right. Do forgive us for our oversight.
Well, okay, just this once, but you two had better not leave me alone again.
Of course not.
Is Flora's voice a little different in this game compared to the others? Sounds a little bit more... High, I guess? I don't know. Well, yeah, Flora, yay! Spoilers for Curious Village in the other game, but like, Flora... She's just kinda there at this point, but, you know... Anyway, uh, we have three other hink coins. We have one in the chair on the left. We have one, uh, it looks kinda like a snow globe or something like up here on the top shelf. And then we have one right underneath the table. There we go. Uh, let's check in with Flora, see what's going on.
What's done is done, so I guess there's no point in my stewing over it. You two must be awfully tired from all that running around. I just made a pot of tea. I'll go fetch it. Um, did you ma- did you just promise, uh, no, did you just make a promise to Flora?
I believe I may have, and unfortunately, this is one promise I fear I may have to break.
Professor, that's terrible! Not to mention very unlike you to go back on your word.
Well, I didn't see you doing anything to dissuade a poor girl from coming with us. Besides, you know our current case is fraught with danger. I don't want her to get hurt. Anyway, we need to finish our work here so we can find the inspector. We best move quickly.
I suppose you're right, Professor. Alright then, what are we looking for here?
Somewhere in my office is a leather-bound notebook with a yellow note sticking out of it. Do you think you can help me find it?
Aye aye, Professor, I'm on the case.
So, I mean, I do feel bad, but now, I'm starting to have a thing here where Luke is very protective of those around him, for those that he really cares about. And now that I'm seeing how he treats Flora, it's making me wonder, is it because something possibly happens to Claire that he just doesn't wanna see anybody else possibly get hurt or something? Oh, boy. Alright, where could you have that book? There it is.
Is this the notebook you were talking about?
Why, yes it is.
Let's see, information concerning the explosion at the Institute of Polydimensional Research. Did you put this notebook together, Professor?
I did, piece by piece. Sadly, most of its contents have been removed.
Whoa, you aren't kidding! Most of the pages have been torn out!
It's been a while since I opened it last. Let me see. At least the newspaper clippings are untapped.
When exactly are all these articles from, Professor? When are they from?
I'll explain more on the bus, but for now, we need to get out of here before Flora returns.
Voila! I thought you might be hungry, so I made some little cucumber sa-. Oh dear, where did they go?
Now I feel bad. Can I go back in there? No, it won't even let me. Oh wait, I can.
Flora will see us when we go back in there.
Damn it. I understand, you know, we're looking out for them. Rosetta has a puzzle for us, though.
Oh, hiya, Mr. L. Where are you rushing off to now? There's no time to talk, hussy. You're in the midst of an important investigation. Um, in case you didn't notice, shorty, I was talking to Professor just then.
We're following a lead in our investigation.
Gotcha, but could I just have a second of your time before you go? Didn't you hear the professor? We're in a hurry, lady! Listen, pipsqueak, you may think you're the Professor's spokesman, but, um, you aren't, okay? Did you just call me a pipsqueak?
Now, Luke, calm yourself. We have time to hear our out. What can I do for you, Rosetta?
Aw, I knew you'd come through for me, prof. See, I've got this puzzle I just can't find the answer to. Could you help a girl out?
A puzzle, you say? Mm-hmm. Let's go to my baby's office and assistance.
Let's have a Luke, uh, Lu- uh, no, 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 let's have a look.
If all you wanted was some help with a puzzle, you could have just said so from the start.
Dear god, Luke, calm down! The missing block. A hidden message is revealed when one of the blocks, A, B, C, or D, replaces the box marked "B." Uh, tap the letter that corresponds to the correct block. I'm almost positive that says "Layton." Because that's the L. That looks like an A. Oh, here's the Y. The T. Here's the N, and out of these blocks, I'd imagine, uh, B is the one... There's the O.
That should do the trick.
That was fun.
Just as I suspected.
Quite right. The answer's B, which is shaped like an O. When you insert that block into space and change the direction of all the blocks, they spell out "Layton."
Thank you so much, Professor. Watching you in action always takes my breath away, hm?
Think nothing of it, Rosetta. Please think nothing of it. I hope to see you next week. Keep up the good work on your paper.
Hee-hee, you bet, Professor. I'm looking forward to hours of private instruction. Oh, but next time we meet, you shouldn't leave your little friend at home. He, he might distract me from my studies. I shouldn't say bad things about your students, Professor, but she is definitely not on my honor roll.
Yeah, I'm just gonna leave things at that. Let's go to Scotland Yard.
About the notebook we picked up at your office, Professor? Exactly what explosion were you researching?
It all happened several years ago, but you were very small. Two scientists working in a physics lab unwittingly caused an explosion during an experiment. Explosion devastated the surrounding area.
Oh no, Claire! That must've been all over the news!
You'd think so, wouldn't you? However, many perish in the blast. A few records of the accident remain.
What happened?
It's something I'm still trying to figure out for myself. Answer me this, Luke. What's the first thing that comes to mind when you hear of an explosion?
Boom! Oh, no, I mean, the explosion of Dr. Songun's time machine, of course.
That was my first thought as well. I have a strong suspicion these two incidents are connected.
Why is that?
Well, it's coming, it's nothing more than a hunch, so I really can't say more right now.
Hmm... Oh, Professor, this is our stop! Here we are, Scotland Yard.
There's no time to waste. We need to find the inspector.
Alright, but we have a couple of hink coins. We have, uh, the one, the steeple, or like the chimney, whatever, tippy-top in the very top left. Around there. Uh, we have one chimney, kinda in the middle there. And then we have the other one, uh, to the very right, right, like in between the two windows, right there. Okay, now we can just enter Scotland Yard. That man has a chin, like dear god, alright. Uh, couple more hink coins here. We have one, uh, I was gonna say the pineapple, but the bush is here to the left, here on the top. Uh, we have one on the red light in the top left, and we also have one on the bottom right, uh, on the bench. There we go. Let's talk to this very, uh... What's the superhero's name? Uh... The Crimson Chin. There we go, Crimson Chin.
Welcome to Scotland Yard, headquarters of our London police. How may I be of service to you?
Well, here's a scene, Inspector Chembly. Will you please let him know that we'd like to speak with him?
Unfortunately, the inspector is terribly busy right now. What's more, I have strict orders to issue this puzzle to all visitors.
Really? That's dumb. A dangerous place. In recent years, the city has been suffering from an increase in accidents and crime. According to a survey, there's one place in the city where there's higher average of injured people and deaths throughout the year. Where could it be? Circle the name of this place. Uh, police station, park, monument, fire station, crossroads, church, cemetery, school. Now, because it's a puzzle, and because, you know, it's gonna be a trick to it, they're not really talking about like actual, like, like, oh, in this particular part of the city, somebody's always getting hurt or doing something. Think about a place that would already have a lot of people being injured, or unfortunately... Not say killed, but pass away. Realistically, when you see like a higher average number of injured people and deaths, it's going to be a hospital.
Let's see if I've got this right. Few things satisfy like a puzzle solved.
That's right. There might be a lot of dangerous places, but the hospitals where injured and sick people gather throughout the year. That poor puzzle guy.
That's correct, all right. Tremendous work as usual, Professor Layton.
Oh, do you two know each other?
Of course, that is, my daughter, Professor. How could any self-respecting puzzle not, not know the name Layton? I'm a huge fan.
I assume the puzzle I just solved was one of your, uh, your own design?
You got me there! I just couldn't pass up the chance to have the Professor Layton solve my puzzle.
I'll call ahead and let the inspector know you're coming. His office is just up those stairs on the second floor. Thank you very much.
Alright, I guess we can actually, uh, go upstairs then. This is a... This is a... Pretty busy office for Inspector Chemley. It seems like it gets a lot of stuff done. I love Barton just sitting in the dog.
Hello!
Uh, we got three more hint coins. We have one in the boxes there to the left. We have one in the trashcan at the bottom there. And we have one, I think it's like a... I think it's like a photo frame, uh, kinda like the middle shelf in the right. There we go. Let's talk to Barton.
Nothing like a nice cup of tea to soothe jagged nerves.
Good day, Barton.
Eh, good day to you, sir!
Barton, we wish to have a few words with the inspector, but I don't see him here.
I don't see him here either!
I was led to believe he was here. In his office?
Yes, he was, but then he got up and left. It was all very sudden. I too am puzzled by his sudden disappearance. Barton, I sincerely hope you're not spreading misinformation about me. I just told you that I needed to pop downstairs to see the commissioner. Oh yes, uh, you did say that, sir. Use your ears, constable. They'll never move up in the force if you don't learn to listen.
Greetings, inspector.
Oh, apologies for not saying hello, Leighton. What a surprise to see you. Welcome to my humble office.
Forgive the sudden intrusion, inspector. I heard that you're leading the investigation on the Prime Minister's disappearance.
I am? And as it- and as it's you I'm speaking with, I'm- I'll be quite candid. This case has me completely baffled. Dozens of eyewitnesses, myself included, and not one blasted lead to work with.
Hmm...
As you were there, I might as well hear your take on things. Have a seat.
I was questioned the day of the incident, but maybe our chat will uncover some new theories.
Alright.
We've already established that you were there when the explosion occurred.
Yes, I certainly was.
You- you must believe, as I do, that there was no way anyone could have survived that blast. Not that quack, Stargan, not his staff, and, no, I hate to say it, not the Prime Minister. But what confounds me is that not a single trace of the lot remains.
What do you mean by that?
What I mean is, we've canvassed the whole place. I haven't found a thing related to the victims. No bodies, no clothing, and no shoes. Not even so much as a pocket watch or ring. All we've recovered from the scene was the ten tons of scrap metal that was used to be the sh- that used to be the machine. No people, though. There were eight of them, sir. What? Did you say something just now, constable? There were eight of them, sir. Eight people vanished. Oh yes, according to eyewitness reports, eight people vanished from the scene. Their group consisted of Stargan, a handful of his assistants, and the Prime Minister. Now, how in the world do eight people just vanish? It's like a blasted magic trick!
Don't worry, inspector. From what I've heard, the Prime Minister is still alive.
Hmm? Ah, young Luke, be a good lad and keep quiet, alright?
The adults are having a serious conversation here.
Ah, if you're bored, why don't you let Barton go play it off?
Inspector, I assure you Luke isn't making this up. There's a very real possibility that Bill Hawks is alive.
What? Well, don't leave me here scratching my head like a fool. Explain, Leighton!
Before I do, I must ask a favor of you first.
What will that be?
Do you recall the explosion that occurred at the Polydimensional Research Institute ten years ago?
What did you just say?
I'll take that as a yes. It is imperative that I see any and all case files on that incident.
You trust my beyond the suffering here, Leighton. What do you know?
Nothing at the moment, but I have suspicion your current case and this old one are linked in some way.
Um, I'd like to help, really I would. Those files are sealed and require top-level clearance. Even a high-ranking officer like myself would have the trouble getting his hands on those.
I see. I had hoped a man of your status might have the influence elsewhere to acquire those documents. Fortunately, it seems I may have hoped for too much. I'm sorry to have asked the impossible of you.
Uh, uh, oh, wait just a moment, Leighton. I- I might be able to get you access to the case file.
Excellent. I would- I would be extremely grateful for that.
Just one more thing, though. These documents don't come for free. I wanna hear everything you know and suspect about the Prime Minister's whereabouts.
Of course, as I've seen the documents and I'm sure my theory is sound, every detail will be yours.
Barton, head down to the archive room and find those old files. Tell them you're there on my orders. Right away, sir! Those files can't leave the archive, but you could read them there. Head downstairs past the lobby into the basement.
Much appreciated, inspector.
I love how Leighton just- his damn charisma stat must be, like, beyond ten. Alright. Ooh, excuse me. I'm getting close to an hour, probably. It's end of solve soon.
Um, hello?
Hi. Well, we're here in a police archive. There are a couple of, uh... Uh, hint coins here as well. We got one in the very bottom-left in the boxes there. We got one, like, in one of the, I think it might be the top drawer, uh, in the middle here. There we are. And also the very top-right, one of the books. There we go. Um, now, there is a hidden hint coin a little bit above Barton here. It'll eventually come out, but damn, there you go, Jesus. They really want you to work for that one.
Welcome to the archive. I gathered all the files pertaining to the explosion.
Thank you, Barton. Your hard work has saved us considerable time.
Ew, these documents are all mildewy and covered in dust.
These files are off-limits to most people. You're the first to touch them a looong time!
I see.
Hand some of those over, and I hope you look through them. Where should I start?
I appreciate the offer, but I should handle these myself. They are top secret after all.
Of course, I understand.
Sorry, I just like the idea of, uh, Leighton just kinda looking through them. It's very rare when we get to see him in a, like, part of the background like this.
You know, it always seems that inspectors are always yelling at you. Don't you ever get tired of it?
It's not so bad. Sure, he scolds me, but only when he has good reason to, which is often, unfortunately.
Oh!
I make a lot of mistakes, so I get yelled at a lot. He's always telling me I lack insight in cases and don't, um, pay attention. Which is completely understandable. I just get distracted and I make mistakes.
Aw, chill out, Barton. Everyone makes mistakes. Heck, I make them all the time.
I goof up pretty bad sometimes. Why, just the other day, I found myself in a most ridiculous predicament. And I'll explain to you via puzzle.
You need to get your car into the parking lot spot, spot... Uh, hold on. You need to get your car into the parking spot marked by the flag in the middle of the grid below. Okay, as you can see, you can only enter a spot from one side. Wait, I can? Sure. Okay, wait, okay, hold on. When you- and when you encounter an X, you must turn left or right. Uh, when you encounter a circle, you must continue driving straight. Also, your car is a... Your car is a, what? It's a bit of a clunker and can't go in reverse, so draw a line from your car to the parking spot. So when- when we get to an X, we have to turn left or right. Okay. Uh... Right, left, go, 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 uh, whoa, 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 calm down, calm down, calm down. Okay, so, that's not gonna work. So... We go here, we keep going, we have to turn right, doop, doop. Uh... Now why ki- Oh, okay, so when they see, like, when they say that you can only enter from one side, they mean from the bottom there. I didn't- I completely missed the little barricade around it, so, uh, turn... Turn... Go, 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 turn... Oh, actually, wait a minute. Cause if I turn here, I just go straight into the thing, that's not how it works. So if I turn, turn... Turn, go, 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 turn, turn... Oh, wait a minute. That's not gonna work either. Maybe turn this way? Turn, turn, go, 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 boom. Okay. There's a reason why this- this puzzle's only fifteen pick-a-rats.
I don't know what to say.
Mean either. Besides, I'm a dumbass. What did I miss? Did I not start in the car? Dear god, I- if I was actually making clips of this, that would make sense. You know what? Hold on. Yep, that's the damn reason. I didn't... I didn't freaking click on the car. Well, that's really annoying of me. I'm almost positive I did this right, though.
Hmm, how about this?
There you go.
Phew, that's a relief.
Well, that's two pick-a-rats I'm not getting, which... Is really annoying. I don't wanna replay all this. Well, I- we'll see. You have to circle all the way around the parking lot to get to the space. Just kinda annoying that you can't just pull straight in, huh? It is really dumb. Alright, where are we in terms of time? Uh, we're getting close to an hour, but I think we're actually getting a little close to a, um... End of this chapter, so we'll go just for a little bit longer here.
Wonderful work, Luke. I bet you would never give the professor any cause that he yelled at you.
Well, he's not really the yelling type, but it's true that I never let a puzzle go unsolved. I've got this reputation to protect.
Oh dear, I'd never consider the possibility that my goof-ups would harm the inspector's reputation.
Don't worry, Barton. The- the- what's- what's most important is you try your best.
If only I could convince the inspector to see things that way.
Luke, come here. I think I found what we came here for.
What is it, professor?
That file yielded some very valuable information, Luke.
What exactly did you find out, professor?
Let's just say I'm very confident the Prime Minister is still alive. However, the only way to save him is to travel to the other London where he's being held.
You think he might be trapped in the future?
Perhaps. Let's bring this discussion to the inspector.
Alright, let's go back to see Chemley.
Well, Leighton, did your investigation bear any fruit?
It did indeed. To start, allow me a few questions. Inspector, were you involved in the investigation into the explosion at the institute ten years ago?
Yes, I was there. Ages ago it was. I remember I just had been promoted to assistant inspector.
I see. And do you remember the names of the scientists thought caused the explosion?
Uh, let me think. Um, ah, it's coming back to me now. One's name- one man's name was Allen, Dmitri Allen.
Weren't there two scientists implicated? Do you remember the second scientist's name?
It was quite a long time ago, you know.
I see you're having some difficulty remembering.
Ev!
Well then, what about the victims? Do you remember much about them?
Explosion caused substantial damage to a room and destroyed a neighboring apartment complex. One of the lab assistants perished in the explosion, as did several tenants in the building next door. Strangely enough, though, I think both the scientists involved in the experiment survived.
That was very informative, Inspector.
Good, because I've got a few questions of my own now. How do you think this old case relates to my current one?
This is just a theory, but I think the Prime Minister is being held somewhere beyond the influence of Scotland Yard.
You mean to say he's being held captive in another country?
You may find what I'm about to tell you is hard to believe, but I think Bill Hawks is being held captive in the future.
If this is your idea of a joke, I'm not laughing.
I can understand your skepticism. Thank you for all your help today, Inspector. Should I learn anything about the Prime Minister's whereabouts, you will be among the first to know. Come, Luke. Let's be off.
Now wait right there. We had a deal. Surely you've got more for me than just a far-fetched theory.
Inspector, I've told you as much as I know at the moment. Now, please excuse us.
I don't know why Leighton thought that was actually gonna go well with him, but alright. I guess it's time to head back. Now that we've got what we came for, let's go back to the clock shop. Cog's waiting for us.
Okay, professor.
Let's go back to Bedlam Road. Here we are, whoops. Go up, but before we actually go to the shop... Not to veto, cause he has another thing for us.
It was you again. Where are you heading now, small fry?
I- I can't say. It's a secret.
Well, I was gonna offer you a puzzle, but you look like you're in a hurry, so forget about it.
Well, what's that? You've got a puzzle that needs solving?
Ooh, I got your attention now, don't I?
The checkerboard, uh-oh. There are three sheets of transparent plastic with different patterns painted on them. If you layer them correctly, a checkerboard pattern appears. In order- it- the order in which you layer them is important, and you can't flip or rotate the sheets. Which sheet goes on the very bottom? A, B, or C? That goes at the very bottom? Hmm... This is gonna be a weird one. Kinda hate the ones where it's like, oh, there's layers to it. Um... You can't flip or rotate the sheets, so that makes it, I guess, a little bit easier. And frankly, they kinda gave you the checker pattern there in the bottom-right. So, I guess that really does help out, so... That alone... So yeah, that alone tells me that... C has to be the one on top. Now, the reason why I say that is the very top-left of the completed checkerboard has a... Yellowish tint to it. B doesn't have it, A doesn't have it. So... And once again, when they say it has to be layered... Like, C has to be the one at the tippy-top to get to it. So now it's like, what goes on the bottom of it? Although I think I may- I may have just solved it by even- by stating that, because... Let's take a look at the... Well, frankly... Uh... The square adjacent to the top-left, either to the right- right next to it or the bottom one, those are blue. But... If we took B at the very bottom... But then we overlaid A on top of it... Now those two adjacent ones are going to be blue right now, but then we put C on top of it, those are empty spots. So they remain... Blue. But in the very top-left... It wa- it was blue, but now we have C overlaying on top of it, that becomes the- the yellowish tint. So, that means that the very bottom... B goes there.
This one's as good as solved. Phew, that's a relief.
Oh my god, my pick-a-rats. I may fix that off-screen. B goes in the very bottom, then the other- other sheets are layered in the- in the order pictured above. Yeah, see, that- then it's A, then it's C.
Splendourous job!
Word.
I suppose we have to head back to future London now, huh?
What's the matter, Luke? Are you scared of traveling through time again?
Yes, I mean, no, as long as I don't have to do it alone.
Of course not. I'll be right here with you.
First on the agenda is heading to Chinatown to meet the future Professor Leighton, right?
That's right. And if my guess is correct, we'll find the Prime Minister there as well.
Do you think we'll run into trouble along the way?
Considering the warm welcome we received from the family at the casino, I'd say anything's, uh, anything's possible. Luke, there's no telling what kind of dangers await us in the future. Maybe it would be best for you to remain here in our time.
What kind of an apprentice would I be if I left you to face danger alone? Of course I'm going to!
I always find that kinda funny. It's like, hey, you don't wanna take Flora, although she seems older than Luke, but, okay. I always find that kinda funny. It's like, hey, you don't want to take Flora, although she seems older than Luke, but, okay. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, I'm gonna save here, because I gotta fix that damn puzzle off-screen, but, uh... That was Chapter 5, and next time we will begin at Chapter 6. Traveling companions? And we'll simply take things from there. So, as usual, thank you all so much for watching, and I will see you all next time for Let's Play: Professor Leighton and the Unwound Future. Love you all so much, and don't forget to spread that love around. Have a great day, everybody.